Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All means will be cable cast on the city's channel and live stream on the city's channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel with a caller please call.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Smith? Reverend Burgess Chair?
Here.
Senate Members Present.
Thank you very much. As we join from our remote locations, please think of the flag, look toward the flag, put your hand on your heart as we recite the pledge of allegiance, and then we will have a moment of silence. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business is proclamations. Lavelle has one.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1582. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby declared June 8th, 2021 to be back to the future today in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Lavelle?
Thank you. I believe we have the Magwoods with us as they wanted to be able to provide some comment. They had a restaurant that originally started in Pitcairn that I visited then, but we're really excited to now have them here in the City of Pittsburgh in South Side Works. And so this is sponsored by both myself and Councilman Kraus. And if the, and I believe the restaurant is now fully open after COVID and people can visit it. I believe it's functional every day beginning at 11:00 AM. But if the Magwoods would like to speak for themselves.
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Angel Magwood and Edwards here with me. We do want to say thank you guys for this amazing honor. We appreciate everyone in Council and the City of Pittsburgh. This journey has been amazing for us and we just know that there's going to be a lot more exciting things coming to the future. So, and notice I said future, not future, future. But we do appreciate everyone. We are, like you said, open Tuesdays through Saturdays, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We're located at 2767 East Carson Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15230. We are open for dine-in and then we do have outdoor seating as well. So we appreciate everyone. Thank you so much for this honor.
Thank you very much. It's also just worth noting that they are actually the first black owned restaurants to ever operate in South Side Works. So this is really exciting.
Did we vote?
No, I was, not yet. Yeah, we may have already voted. Do we vote, Madam Clerk? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or nay? Are the Magwoods still on, by the way?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We're here, we can hear you.
Can you tell us what's on the menu?
We have 150 flavors of wings, 38 types of burgers, 24 types of french fries, 18 types of hot dogs. We have just introduced this week, we have cinnamon toast crunch chicken wings, and also we are rolling out funnel cake french fries. So another first to come to Pittsburgh and no one else is going.
All right, I'll be over this week to see you.
Definitely. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm a restaurant guy, so you got me. You had me on 120 types of wings. You had me.
150, 150.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I shoot you 25. Okay.
Yeah. But thank you so much. Definitely come over and see us. And you'll see, we are, like you said, we're one of the first black owned restaurant in South Side Works, but we're also family. So when you walk in here, you'll see myself, you'll see my husband, you'll see our sons. Like, that was the whole purpose of Back to the Future, to bring food, family, and that's what we tried to do.
I'll see you later this week. Be blessed.
Thank you.
All right, we have several to be read into the record.
We still don't.
One, if you would.
No.
Regime of the record.
There's more to be presented, Councilman.
It doesn't show. Wait, where's that? I only have one to be presented.
Okay, that's, well, maybe we're just confusing vernacular. But mine's to be read in its entirety, which is 1589, shared with Councilman O'Connor and Strasburger.
Yeah, it's not, it's not listed. It just says read to the record. So, so let's do Councilman Kraus's next.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want it read in its entirety?
I do, because there's, there's an importance to recognizing early activists in the, in gay rights movements. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Whereas, the LGBTQIA+ communities fight for equal dignity in the eyes of the law has spanned decades in the US. And whereas, as the relentless activism by the community's cross-sectional advocates, contemporary monumental United States Supreme Court decisions have guaranteed the LGBTQIA+ community equal treatment and protection under the law. And whereas, in 2013, SCOTUS carried down the ruling that the Defense of Marriage Act was unconstitutional, as well as overruled California's Proposition 8, a state constitutional amendment intended to ban same-sex marriages. And whereas, in 2015, SCOTUS ruled in the civil rights case, Obergefell versus Hodges, that it was the fundamental right of same-sex couples to marry. And whereas, the community has also seen its advocacy for inclusion among groups protected under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act come to fruition in the 2020 SCOTUS landmark civil rights case, expanding workplace protections guaranteed to individuals identifying as part of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas, these milestones would have not been reached if not for the risk taken by activists, who are too many to name, the pride would not be what it is today without the work of Sylvia Rivera, Marsha P. Johnson, Ms. Major Griffin Gracie, Harvey Milk, Brenda Howard, Frank Cameny, Lily Visens, Barbara Smith, Gilbert Baker, the Gay Liberation Front, Gay Activists Alliance, Street Transvestites Action Revolutionaries, Radical Lesbians, Eastern Regional Conference of Homophile Organizations. And whereas, the victories, big and small, in favor of equal treatment of LGBTQIA+ persons would not have been possible without Storme Delevere, Baird Ruston, James Baldwin, Dale Jennings, Harry Hay, Renee Richards, Michael Sam, Senator Tammy Baldwin, Sally Ride, Larry Kramer, Alicia Garza, and so many others not mentioned. And whereas, the aforementioned list is by no means exhaustive, and the fight for equality is a collective initiative. And whereas, while giant strides have been taken towards equal treatment, those who identify as LGBTQIA+ continue to face discrimination and violence from their families, employers, healthcare providers, neighbors, and their government. And whereas, the month of June has long been the time when we commemorate and celebrate the LGBTQIA+ community, as well as a time to reflect on challenges the community still faces and what we can all do to end discrimination still faced by the LGBTQIA+ identifying individuals. And whereas, June public parades, marches, and events are also, are the result of the catastrophic Stonewall uprising, the first march known as the Christopher Street Liberation Day March, originated from the concept proposed by the Eastern Conference of Homophile Organizations to honor and to mark the one-year anniversary of what had happened in New York, June 28th, 1969. And whereas, pride in the movement has evolved and grown to be more inclusive and diverse, with many different voices contributing to meaningful discourse and activism for equitable outcomes. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate activities and activists and allies, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare June to be Pride Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve. With discussion, please.
Although, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay?
Aye.
Kraus?
Thank you. First, I want to recognize Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman O'Connor in sharing the presentation of this proclamation with me. And, and thank you, Deputy Clerk, Kim, for reading that in its entirety. I know that was a whole lot. I had asked Brasha, who I'm forever indebted to for having written this proclamation, to really do an exhaustive research of the foundation of pride and how it came to be, and who really were the very early on activists that are rarely mentioned, but clearly recorded in history and need to be recognized for the foundation that they laid. And so, what, I was speaking with Madam Clerk off the record before we came on, and for those of you who would like to have a bit of a deeper dive in the, in a really good cognitive history of how the gay rights movement evolved, with just the very beginning being the Stonewall uprising. But much of this actually that we recognized in the proc actually took place even before that. There is a great documentary that is streaming on Prime right now, which was done originally on PBS American Experience, and is simply known as The Stonewall Uprising. And if you would like to have a, a deeper foundation in, in what actually led up to Stonewall and how that foundation was laid by many of the people that we spoke about in the proc, I would encourage you to do so. And I would like to take a minute just to recognize some of the people that were mentioned in the proclamation that are well-known names and well-known faces to many of us in the, in the community, but may not be as well-known to people, friends of the community, I should say. So Sylvia Rivera was a co-founder of STAR, which was the Street Transvestite Action Revolutionaries. She was a trans activist and founder of the Gay Liberation Front in New York City. Marsha P. Johnson was actually at Stonewall, and she was also a co-founder of STAR. And at the same time, there is a great documentary streaming on Prime as well about the life of Marsha P. Johnson, which is a, it's a, it's a wonderful watch just in and of itself to learn about the amazing life of this woman. Harvey Milk, everybody knows Harvey Milk. Ms. Major Griffin Gacy, she was also at Stonewall. She was a trans activist. Many of the people that know the story of Stonewall but don't quite understand the full history, the uprising really was led by trans women of color, who are still today, 50 years into the movement, part of the most marginalized part of LGBTQIA+ community. Brenda Howard is known as the mother of pride. She coordinated the first march, which took place one year after the Stonewall uprising. She was also a member of the Gay Liberation Front. Frank Cameny was co-founder of the Madison Society, which was really the first organized attempt to advocate for rights for gay lesbian people, and was founded, I want to say mid-1960s. Lily Vences was also an activist. She was the first member of the Madison Society. Many of the people that are listed here were members of the Madison Society. Barbara Smith as well. Gilbert Baker actually designed the rainbow flag back in 1978. The Gay Liberation Front was named for a number of gay organizations that formed in New York City in 1969, immediately following the Stonewall uprising. The Street Transvestite Action Revolutionaries, known as STAR, I mentioned earlier before. Stormy DiLavari was also present at Stonewall. Baird Ruston, who we have talked about before here in council meetings, was a civil rights leader that worked side by side with Martin Luther King, had to hide his sexuality. But after forming the March on Washington directly with Dr. King, I came out and became a, an activist for gay rights. Renee Richards was the very first trans athlete that went all the way to the Supreme Court to be able to fight after her reassignment surgery to play in the US Tennis Association. One of the more hot button issues today that the radical right likes to inflame is the issue of trans athletes and how they can and cannot play in certain sporting arenas. But Renee Richards led the way there. Michael Sam, the first openly gay player in the NFL. Tammy Baldwin, of course, we know Larry Kramer, we know, and Alicia Garza is the co-founder of Black Lives Matter Movement. So they're, they're all incredibly important people in the movement. And recognizing them and speaking openly about them speaks to the diversity of the community and how far-reaching and how broad the community really is. And I think it's very important that we tell their stories and list just how very important they were to the movement. So I appreciate you allowing me to sort of indulge here. I'll be happy to turn it over to Councilwoman Strasburger or O'Connor if they have additional comment. But I know this took a little bit of time, but I thought it was very important to speak the names of those who were foundational in, in leading the, the change that we are appreciating today. So thank you. Good?
Thank you very much. Any other comments from any other member of council?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank Councilman Kraus for, and Brasha for their work on this. It's an amazing amount of research that went into this. And I agree, we have to honor those whose shoulders we stand, upon whose shoulders we stand in these movements. There's so much more work to be done, but there's so much work that's happened because of brave individuals and organizations in that over the past, not just 50 years, but, you know, decades before that as well. Certainly started before then. So thank you for your work in highlighting this. I appreciate you allowing me to join as a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Chair, I would also just like to chime in and thank Councilman Kraus for all of his hard work. And I think it's, it's very important, as Councilwoman Strasburger said, to mention the history and the background, and just thank you for allowing us to co-sponsor. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Councilman. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, that moves us to our next proclamation to be read into the record. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. And feel free to just read the, the final two, Deputy Clerk.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate the decades-long career of Lawrence Gerson, VMD, the knowledge and time he has given to the field of veterinary medicine, and the commitment he has shown to the community of Point Breeze in the City of Pittsburgh. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare June 7th, 2021, to be Lawrence Gerson VMD Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or nay? Thank you very much. Councilman Smith's proclamation.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1590. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend stop the violence for commemorating this historic event, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, June 12th, to be June 10th, D2 kickoff best day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed or nay? All right, they're read into the record. All right. I think that takes us to public comment. I will go through public comment before handing it back over to the president. The next order of business, public comment. I'd like to remind everyone that rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are, or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted. First speaker, please, the, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. My first speaker is Chris Grimm.
Yes, hi. This is Fallon Zuckey and Chris Grimm. We are in Point Breeze. I'm sorry, I know that we're on three minutes, but he just stepped away for one second. But just to get started, I know that we had sent over a PowerPoint. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look it over. We are going to be discussing a plan that we have to buy city-owned properties. So I'm going to turn it over to my partner, Chris Grimm.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry. So, our proposal is that, you know, we're trying to take care of some of the blight on our own. Everybody knows it's an issue. Everybody's trying to help out. We know the land bank's trying to revamp things and get going. We've been trying to follow what they're doing. And then there's the Conservatorship Act, which, you know, there's mixed reviews on that. And, you know, it's some, in some instances, it's working, some instances it's not. So we were trying to think of maybe a way to like combine the both. So what we were thinking is, we kind of have a plan here. You know, there's too many, there's a lot of blight. But what we're going to do is propose a program where, you know, kind of get all of the city properties, get them all categorized, you know, break it down. There's like 40 some thousand from what, you know, some numbers I've seen. But what we can, we can break them down to, you know, we create a fund where, you know, people can propose ideas for each, each, each plot of land. So, you know, they want to redevelop it, we'll get it going. You know, they, they present funding, they present, you know, how they're going to get it to go and what the purpose of that property is. Then the city can, you know, then we'll have a fund that they can get that money from, but then they'll have to pay it back to that fund. So we're thinking of like a two to five-year timeframe, and then they can refinance out of that, and then that money will go back into the fund. And then while they're doing construction, you know, for those two years, two to five years, all the interest and everything can be paid back into that fund. So then the fund will continue to grow, and then that'll make it easier to provide for low-income housing, you know, for green space, for, you know, homeless, homelessness, stuff like that. And this fund can, can grow to, you know, with the amount of properties that are blighted, you know, and vacant, to the amount of, you know, the average home in Pittsburgh's like $208,000. That can essentially be billions of dollars that the city can use to fund, you know, other projects such as low-income housing. And, you know, we would, a lot of these properties would be geared towards low-income housing, affordable housing, you know, green space designated as such. And if people keep going into the properties, like if people, like if developers keep using this, like going back in two or three times dipping, eventually like the third one, you have to make it affordable, you know, make like stipulations. And we can have incentives, like, you know, this can help people that can't normally get a loan. We can create programs that'll help them be able to afford this kind of a project. We can work with the banks, or we will be the bank essentially, because we'll be pulling from the fund. We've talked with HUD. HUD's, HUD seems to be keen on the situation. I've known they've done like an experimental program in Houston for their homelessness. I've talked to Michael Horvath here. He seems key to the idea.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Alkohana Hal Makina.
Greetings. My title's Alkohana Hal Makina. I am the Grand Inka of the Aroqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, also known as Indians. To those who took an oath, to those who have a fiduciary responsibility to the people of the land, you no longer get the opportunity to control the narrative. You will not silence our voices. We are a city under siege. We are in a state of emergency. The killing of us in the educational system, the killing of us in the boardroom, at your job, the killing of us in your courtroom, the economically, social, financially, and environmental injustices that exist in our community need an overhaul, to say the least. I would like to read onto the record the names of people who've been caught up in the crisis called gun violence. Damonte Adams, Robert Eggers, Malik Allen, Gregory Anderson, Michael Arnold, Daimir Boyd, Katrina Bray, Nigel Brodeus, Richard Brookend, George Brodsky, Martel Bryant, Christopher Butler, Keith Bird, Kawante Carpenter, Julian Carter, Kent Carter, Dawn Castrefi, Zabir Chambers, Ryan Clay, Kelly Coaden, Jayneal Crawford, Desheer Davenport, Ardell Davis, Nico Dawson, Shane Edwards, Oliver Foley, Isaiah Freeman, Nathaniel Freeman, Edgar Humbug, Jarrett Gambril, Shaheed Gale, Marcus Gibson, Justin Gomez, Martel Good, James Goodwin, Lafayette Gordon, Micah Graham, Blake Green, Jamie Green, LeVar Green, Jasmine Guest, Christopher Gumm, David Socks, Kenneth Harrison, Miki Happel, Joseph Demetrius, Harold Paul Darwin, Levante, and the list goes on. We have a crisis on our hands. Gun violence is an epidemic.
All right, seeing no other speakers, I will now turn this over to President Teresa Kell Smith to continue the meeting.
Thank you, Reverend, so much. And our next order of business is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No favors, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. And can we have Councilman Kraus for Councilman Coghill?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1573, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of the US Army Corps of Engineers in the Amount of $172,502.26 for Work in Collaboration with the Sawmill Run Local Protection Project. Bill Number 1574, Resolution Providing for a Supplementary Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Transportation for Local Costs Associated with the State Route 0028, Section 809 Project, and Providing for the Payment of Municipal Incurred Costs Not to Exceed $144,450.50. Bill Number 1575, Resolution Authorizing the Transfer by the City to Allegheny County, Certain Temporary Construction Easement Rights on Certain Property Within the Second, 22nd, and 23rd Ward of the City, in Cooperation with an Allegheny County Construction Project in and Around the Roberto Clemente Bridge.
Madam President, may I offer a motion to waive the rules on 1575 so that it may appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Can we have, we have a motion? Can we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Suppose the bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Internal Governmental Affairs.
Madam President, also Madam Clerk, on Bill 1588-
Madam President, also Madam Clerk on Bill 1588, that is supposed to be co-sponsored by President Kell Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So noted. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1576, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Cal Bride Place Project, North Side, near the intersection of California Avenue and Kirk Bride Street. Bill Number 1588, Resolution Transferring a Total of $380,000 within the 2021 Operating Budget from the Department of Public Works to the Department of Parks and Recreation for the Purpose of Increase in Pay for Lifeguards and Reopening as Many Pools as Possible for the 2021 Season.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, do you want to make a motion to waive, relate so that can, because this is timely?
Thank you. Motion to waive the rules of council so that 1588 can appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, the, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee's Agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman, very much for your work on this. And that takes us to Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman, good morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1577, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for 21 Additional Days, thereby making the Declaration effective until June 29, 2021, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 1578, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of PMA Management Corporation in the Amount of $16,920 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Granite Pillar in the Interest of Saint Michael Cemetery at 2729 South 18th Street by the City Public Works High Lift. Bill Number 1579, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sale, 2046 Lake Street, and thereafter authorizing the Execution of a Quick Claim deed conveying all of the city's right, title, and interest in, into said property deprived well LLC.
Thank you. And Councilman, do you have a request to waive, a motion to waive the rules of council?
Yes.
1577?
Yes, motion to waive the rules of council for Bill 1577, so we can take it under unfinished business today.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the bill will appear on today's, the end of the meeting. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Good morning, Madam President, no new papers, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman, and myself, Chair of Hearings, Council, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kell Smith.
Could you read them all? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes. Bill Number 1580, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the National Historical Publications and Records Commission's Access to Historical Records Archival Projects to Enhance Discoverability and Access to Pittsburgh Archival Collections and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $133,934. Bill Number 1581, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission's Historical and Archival Records Care Grant to Scan and Rehouse 26 Volumes of the City Council Minute Books from 1816 through 1877, and 74 Volumes of Annex Bureau Books, and further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $8,016. The Grant Requires A Nods From the City in the Amount of $8,016 for This stated Purpose for a Total Project Cost $16,032. Bill Number 1586, Ormit Amending and Supplementing the City Code at Title 4, Public Places and Properties, Article 11, Parks and Playgrounds, Chapter 477, Permits and Fees, Section 47701, Park Permit Procedures, Section 47702, Fees for Swimming, Golf Course, Skating Rents, and Other Recreational Facilities, so as to Give Priority to City Residents for Park Facility Rentals.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1567, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for June 2, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1475, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $25,000 to John H. McCurry in Full and Final Settlement of an Employment Matter. Bill Number 1501, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of William J. Miller Jr. Esquire in an Amount Not to Exceed $25,200 for Arbitration Services rendered in Connection with the City and FOP Act 111 Interest Arbitration. Bill Number 1502, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Desiree Pinkston and her attorney, Michael J. Healy, in an Amount of $28,500 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed at the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage of vote, either the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call them?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle. Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1568, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for June 2, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1521, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into Relevant Agreement or Execute Required Purchase Orders for Two Throwbots, Two Throwbots with Recon Robotics at a Cost Not to Exceed $26,608.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. So I've been thinking about this since last week, where I asked a bunch of questions from, by, from Commander Trapp, about how it would be these throwbots, which are robots that you throw into a situation, literally throw into a building or something that do camera and video work, right? And he told us that they would only be used by SWAT. And I felt a little more comfortable about that when asking him, you know, kind of what context this would be used. Councilwoman Strasburger, I think, asked whether or not it would be used in kind of demonstrations or in street rallies, and, and we were told no. And yet, I've still, I've continued to get questions from the public about these cameras and kind of what pieces of our code applies to them or just not apply to them. And I actually have on my screen right now our facial recognition legislation. I got an email from a constituent asking whether we would be applying this facial recognition constraints to this equipment. And I actually can't say whether or not they should be. So in reading the ordinance, it, you know, does, does this ordinance apply to this device? Is the question in front of me right now. And I'm, I, I'm uncomfortable with the, I think, the various parts of code. And because technology keeps changing, I feel like we're a little, we're already behind the current technology, even though we keep updating code to try to keep up with it. And so we have some ordinances that apply to cameras and like body cameras, and how long you're allowed to keep footage, and that it be destroyed in a year, which is a separate piece of code. So I feel like we really need to revisit all of these pieces of ordinance to see how they fit together and to what kinds of technology they apply. And so I'm going to change my vote. I voted yes last week, but today I'm going to vote no because I realize that we just can't stay lagging behind the technological abilities that we're giving to departments. We have to make sure that we keep our discussion with the public and with the technologies that we're permitting and authorizing the purchase of, and so that we know that we're protecting people's civil rights, that we know that the public and ourselves are comfortable with what is being done and not being done. We've seen in the media recently that even the facial, facial recognition technology ordinance that we have on the books was disregarded in some police work in, within the last year. And so with that, just because we, we really, I think, should take more time to make sure that these pieces are all aligned. I don't see any reason to rush into this one, so I will be voting no on this bill today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage of vote, either the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No, on Bill 1521. Is there another bill? I don't, no, there's no other bill, I think, no, on Bill 1521.
Yeah, I'll work, we'll get, you know, some numbers to get.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes six, one, no.
The bills, thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1569, Report of the Committee on Public Works for June 2, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1518, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into a Memorandum of Understanding with the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, Norfolk Southern Railroad, and various other stakeholders concerning certain historic mitigation measures to be taken by Norfolk Southern Railroad in the course of its replacement of the Merchant Street Bridge within the city.
You've heard the reading of the titles of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, their passage of vote, either the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes seven, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1570, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for June 2, 2021, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1529, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections of the City to Apply for Grant Funding from the Allegheny County Department of Community and Economic Developments Act 152 Blight Removal Program to Fund the Demolition of Six Blighted Structures Throughout the City. In the Event, the Grant is Awarded. This Resolution Provides for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $250,000. Supplemental Funds in the Amount of $87,750 will come from the 2021 Capital Budget for a Total Project Cost of $337,750.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, their passage of vote, either the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes six, no zero.
The bills have.
Sorry, Madam President, I'm back. I got, I got cut off during the one bill. I was gonna, well, I guess I can hold my comments to the end, but I would like to register an eye on all bills, and I can speak to the facial recognition after the fact. For some reason, I got cut off, so sorry about that.
Thank you, Councilman. Do you have that, Madam Clerk?
So noted.
Okay, thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1571, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for June 2 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 1526, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 315, which authorized the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections and Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement to Existing Agreements to Purchase a Cellar Civic Platform and a Cellar Citizen Access Subscription and Cloud Hosting Services, so as to Extend the Contract an Additional Year until June 30, 2022, and Increase the Not-to-Exceed Cost from $1,289,919.29 to $1,310,475.13. Bill Number 1527, Resolution Amending Resolution 238, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement with Cohie Law Group and CTC Technology and Energy for the Renegotiation of the City's Cable Franchise Agreements with Comcast and Verizon and certain additional telecommunication consulting services, and further Providing for Final Payment to Smart Works Partners for Work provided under an Agreement authorized by Resolution 741 and 748 to increase the total not-to-exceed amount for additional telecom and small cell facility support to a total of $531,213.70 and to add an authorized signer. Bill Number 1528, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 687, which authorized the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or an Amendment with Planet Technologies for Essential Support and Maintenance Services for the Continued Operation of City's SaaS Email and Data File Collaboration, including Evolve 365 Online Training and Telephone Support related to any Microsoft 365 Software Features, increasing the Authorized Contract by $27,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, their passage of vote, either the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, I have to run. I'm sorry. Let me start over. I'm sorry. Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clark. And I have to say, this is the first time I've been here in twelve years that you ever had to say, let me start over. So that's a pretty good track record. Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves us on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number fifteen seventy-two, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for June second, twenty twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number fifteen forty-four, Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the twenty 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 twenty-four amended and restated Corporation in Support Agreement with the Allegheny Regional Asset District, the Carnegie Library in Allegheny County, and to enter into an amendment thereto in ratifying prior actions.
You've heard the reading of the titles of bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of their passage of the, I will name is called those opposed, vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions, and we have final action for, to vote on bill fifteen seventy-seven, the Declaration of Disaster Emergency. Councilman Lavelle.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bill fifteen seventy-seven, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency ratified by Council on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration to twenty-one additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the, I will name is called those opposed, vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't, the bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. I have a few meeting announcements that will take comments from members. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June ninth, council will meet for the standing committees meeting at ten a.m., chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Also tomorrow afternoon, one thirty p.m., council will hold a cable cast post agenda discussion with the Pittsburgh Public School Student Advisory and Government Council, and that's, will be chaired by Councilman O'Connor. And to register for tomorrow's council meeting, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting's webpage by nine a.m. Wednesday. You may also register by calling four one two two five five two one three eight. Is there anything from members?
Madam Clark, I mean, Madam President.
Okay, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I, I've been talking with the director of our fair housing program, Director Megan Conforhammond, a bunch, you know, we heard her testimony in our public hearing on inclusionary zoning. We've been chatting a bunch about zoning, and I would like to motion for a post agenda on the history basically of zoning and its impacts on fair housing. So I think there's kind of a lot to work with there and a lot that the public and council can explore, and so that's the kind of general topic. And we'll probably take some time to put the panel together, so it's nothing that will be needing to schedule very soon, maybe after we come back from recess, but I think there's a lot there for us to grapple with as a council.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. We'll get that scheduled. And anything from any other members?
Madam President, I'm sorry, I was. Yeah, so, and Councilwoman Gross, I was trying to answer your question and I got cut off. But I will send you an email on the facial recognition bill and how this criteria doesn't fall in that line. There's various sections in that original bill. Because I had the same concern, spoke to law as well as the director today. And if they were to use it for facial recognition, they would have to come back to council and go through a different process, but I will send you the email with the definitions in that, in that section to help clear it up. So I got the same questions as you did, and I've been clearing it up for a couple constituents as well. So just wanted to make that point. Sorry, I got cut off. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything from any other members?
I'll just, may I just comment?
Yes.
So thank you, Councilman. I'll look for that email, but I, I, I still think we are, we need to be vigilant basically as these technologies keep changing. Is something a camera? Is it surveillance? And where's the line between the two? Is it software? Is it not? Now we have this autonomous vehicle with a camera. So we do just need to be mindful, I think, as a council, that our ordinances are keeping up with what's actually in the marketplace and what our departments are using. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
As we move forward to reimagining police and having these ongoing discussions about reimagining police, I will simply note and will say it frequently that that's only half of this. Talking about the policing part is only half of it. That's the easier part, actually, in many ways. The harder part is the reallocation of funds into the preventative programs that caused this problem in the first place. Of more affordable housing, better jobs, rebuilding black communities, integrating Pittsburgh so that we're not as segregated. We are the most segregated city in America. And we need to deal with that. It's interesting, when I say that, no, people are uncomfortable with it. They don't like their language. When I say that Pittsburgh's segregated, they get defensive. I don't mean it to be, well, it's negative. I don't mean it to be hostile, which it is. Pittsburgh is segregated. The idea that this is the first restaurant in the history of the city to open in Southside Works, a place where its residents, Southside, is ninety-six or ninety-seven percent white, shows, that's just an example, all across our city, it is deeply entrenched, deeply segregated. Those were not accidental. They were purposeful. Our segregation was done to dis- to give economic advancement to white folk and to rob that from black people. And we need to, we be aware of that, understand that that drives a lot of the choices that are made in our city. And so we must reallocate because of the historical robbing, really, of black people of wealth. We must consciously, directly, ongoingly, disproportionately invest allocations in African-American communities. And so we talk about, you know, on the left side, right sizing police and reimagining the police. And I do think we need less police, perhaps higher pay. I'm in favor of paying because I think it's a stressful, difficult job, but perhaps less of them on the left-hand side and more investment into social programs and into policies and practices that empower black communities. And so I'll continue to be a voice, and I've staked, that's not new for me. I've been saying that for twelve years. I've been saying that when no one else was saying it. Before all of this, I've been saying the same things since I've been a member of council. That is always. Because institutional racism is baked into our city. It's baked into it almost in most decisions that we make. And I'll be talking more about that in the upcoming weeks. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other members? And so then I'm just going to say, I'm looking forward to the conversations and that, you know, I think that there's times that we talk about making sure the community and the city of Pittsburgh get the things that they need in terms of housing and financial investment. We don't talk a lot about the county and holding the county accountable for the two billion dollars they get for social services. Instead, we try to use our small budget to supplement what we're not receiving. And I mean, if we really want to have a real conversation, that's where we need to start. Because then we, then people don't need us to find jobs. They don't need us to find housing. They can afford whatever house they want. They can live wherever they want as long as we're providing people with the social services and the skills they need to get to that place. I tell people all the time, I was a young, young woman with, with two children, then I was a widow, and I mean, my life was in utter chaos. And if it weren't for other people helping me and showing me along the way how I could do things on my own, I would never be where I am now. So I just think sometimes we need to lift people up instead of just talking about, we need to really do some things. So with that said, I'm going to say I wanted to say, invite people to Juneteenth, which is actually kicking off in Chertier City this year, which is a predominantly black community in my district. It has the highest homeownership in the city of Pittsburgh, low crime. It is an amazing community, and we invite people to come to kick off Juneteenth in Arnett District with B. Marshall, and I want to thank B. Marshall for making sure that he's highlighting such a phenomenal neighborhood with Juneteenth, with this Juneteenth event. And it's this Saturday, beginning at ten a.m. until nine p.m. On Saturday, there's going to be lots of things for kids to do, lots of things for adults to do, and lots of vendors, so please come out and enjoy our district in this one amazing Juneteenth event. And then I also want to say that, you know, a lot of us internally know that, and I don't know if I should say this publicly, but Chief of Staff Gilman's mother has been very ill. And she had surgery yesterday, and I just want to let the Chief of Staff Gilman and his family know that we're all thinking of him and his family and praying for the best for his mother in this very difficult time. With that said, we have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Excellent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.